We'll call Kelly.
I mean, Vicky, whoa.
Whoa, sorry.
She called me Kelly.
Just get up and leave.
We'll talk later. Vicky. Uh, delayed.
This one?
Here. Delayed.
Yeah.
Here.
Here.
Here. Here. Matt, would you please review the fire exits?
Exits are in the back of the LGI.
Thank you. Please rise for a moment of silence for Edith Fletcher, retired teacher. Thank you. Uh, we're gonna begin with open to the public. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make a public comment? Seeing none, we're gonna move on to our workshops. We have two workshops tonight. Our first is, uh, from our, from Segare Oridesindo O'Neal, Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Student Support.
Alright, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Alright, excited to be here. So, what I wanted to do tonight, in tonight's presentation, I wanna talk, uh, kinda do a little recap of what we've done for the year in terms of professional development, as well as some opportunities for our professional staff, and then kinda go into initiatives that we wanna continue, as well as initiatives that we want to start incorporating into our next school year. So when we look at our, some of the professional development topics that we've had this year, so we've covered the gamut where, um, in terms of supporting our E and L students, looking at, at ACEs, accommodating our students with disabilities, looking at data, restorative practices. Um, we even had a presentation from a keynote speaker who came to talk about artificial intelligence and Gen Z learners, so starting to have that conversation around AI, cuz as much as we want to avoid it, it's already here. The kids are already using it, so we have to see how we can embrace it and of course use it as a way to support our students. All those topics that you're seeing right on the screen, those were all, most of them were delivered by our own staff. So we have a wide level of expertise just within our school district. See some other topics, as well as we've done a, a deep dive into RTI, MTSS, really looking at the different tiers of support so that we're able to help students while they're in the Gen X classroom, and not waiting for them to have to be referred to special education. So we've had our TOSSAs who have done an amazing job, are really working with our teachers, not just on Professional Development Day, but also throughout the school year, freeing up teachers for that support. We started a lot of work already around the science of reading, as well as looking at continuing to support our teachers in foundations, K2. Um, actually, on Friday, we're also gonna be screening the Beacon Film, Lines of Demarcation. That's one of the things that we're gonna be doing on Friday, as well as providing teachers with opportunities to work in collaboration with their grade level. And then looking at curriculum development, so we did have our K2 teachers that were engaged in a new math resource, Ready Math. So they received professional learning, as well as support, continued to support the SEAL Civic Readiness, which we started this year, and of course, continued to support the SEAL by Literacy. So Units of Study Development, so we had some new courses that were introduced this year that needed, uh, the, the units needed to be developed and to support it. So we did have some work this year done around units of study. So our AP African American Studies, our Intro to Hip Hop. Again, we started work around social studies, magical realism, Italian cinema, music production, guitar, and principles of neuroscience. New courses for next year are gonna be, uh, Intro to Education. Uh, we do have now the population to possibly launch a Spanish for heritage speakers. So that course is basically for someone like me, when I went to school, that I was a native Spanish speaker. However, I was not literate in Spanish. I couldn't really read it or write it with proficiency. So it's for those students who actually know how to speak the language already. They have that, um, that conversational piece, but they don't know how to read and write it. Journalism in our school, AP Human Geometry, and new media. And again, that's in, in, um, in concert with already all the wonderful electives that Beacon has to offer.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
So, um, for the Units of Study Development and the new courses, uh, everything on here, except for the social studies, um, is all high school, right?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Unfortunately, uh, we do have some middle school folks who have been doing, uh, curriculum development, I forgot to put that in there, around ELA and math. So there's some work that has been done there, as well as history.
Okay.
Uh, so we do have a team of people as well. Okay. And then I wanna talk very, just very briefly, as we know, New York State has some new, uh, graduation measure requirements that they presented in November. Uh, one of the things that, um, we thought it was important was that this year, that some of those recommendations, we start to have conversations around and start preparing ourselves as a school district. A lot of the recommendations that were made are very robust recommendations that are gonna take multi-years of implementation by the state. So it's not something that falls on the school district. It's more of us waiting to see what they're gonna do. They have been adopted by the Board of Regents, so they were voted on, so these things will be happening. The timeline has not been made public yet. So there were 13 recommendations that the Blue Ribbon Commission made to the Board of Regents. The ones that, um, we are gonna be focusing on. So if we look at, um, making sure that we, as a school district, are ensuring that we're offering opportunities for our students, students to be involved in civic responsibility. So may, it's so incorporating that into our units of study in history and social studies, again, always supporting cultural competence. We do have a financial literacy class already, and as you saw, one of the recommendations is to actually make that a requirement for graduation. That was one of the recommendations of the Blue Ribbon Commission. Um, supporting fine arts, science, technology, engineering, math. One of the recommendations for the, of the Blue Ribbon Commission was eventually to actually, um, create categories, a STEM category, humanities category, and actually give students options of how many credits they have within those bigger categories, versus saying that everyone has to have four years of English, everyone has to have four years of, of social studies. So that's something that they are working on. Um, this, we did, uh, ask the state to create rubrics for performance assessment. However, we need to have, uh, opportunities as a school district to have a clear understanding of what a performance-based assessment is, and start giving teachers an understanding of what it is before it becomes an actual regulation from the state. There's a lot of misconceptions about it. I think people confuse performance-based assessments with project-based learning. And project-based learning is very different and more elementary, while performance-based assessment is something that takes multiple, multiple years to actually implement and may take multiple teachers. So I think, um, we need some more, uh, professional development around that. And then of course, um, the state will be requiring that our professional development plans are actually have a component where we are supporting the culturally responsive sustaining framework. Beacon already has that kinda in there. Uh, all of our professional development days, we make sure that we incorporate courses and opportunities for teachers to implement, uh, cultural pedagogy, as well as practices in, um, in our classrooms. I'm just gonna stop you in case there's questions.
So do we, once we have all of this in place, do we apply to be like officially a Blue Ribbon School District, or?
I'm sorry.
Do, do we, is it, is it like a certification that we get, that we're a Blue Ribbon School District, or is it just sort of?
So the Blue Ribbon was really the commission.
Mm-hmm.
And, once they actually come up with a plan, then what's gonna happen is that school districts will be required to follow the plan. So it's not that our district will be considered a Blue Ribbon District.
So everyone will be doing it.
Yeah, so, yeah. So that, that's kinda what they call, they called the commission, because they wanted to make sure they still maintain the rigor. So the Regents exams are, as you can see, are not gonna go away, because we have a couple of more that are coming down the pike that I'm gonna talk about later. But, um, it's looking at performance assessment as an option for those students who do not wanna take the Regents exam, or maybe cannot take the Regents exam, because that was identified as an area that was a barrier for a lot of students. Okay. So in order to support that, as you know, the New York State has also taken on, um, looking at the science of reading as an initiative. So one of the things that they've already started is that they have produced, uh, several literacy briefs. The briefs focus on what the science of reading actually is, that it is not a curriculum, that it's actually a body of research, that talks about the best practices to teach reading. Um, the briefs also talk about what it looks like in the early years, what it looks like in elementary, and also what it looks like in high school. So the, the thought process behind the science of reading and what the state wants to do behind these literacy briefs is that they wanna ensure that people understand that you teach literacy across all grade levels, K-12, and across all content areas. So one of the things that we're going to do here is that we'll be using these briefs that have been published on the New York State website as kinda the anchor of the work that we're gonna be doing here. We do wanna start first with our administrators, so they have an understanding by our building level administrators, what it means to be literate, you know, across all content areas, and then introducing some of that then to the teachers. Now, the teachers have introduced, have been introduced to some of it. Again, um, our, our RTI TOSSAs have done work around that. I've done some work around that, talking about what it means to, to actually teach evidence-based strategies within the classroom. So we've, we've kinda touched upon that, but we have a lot more work to do. We're talking about 60 years of research that we need a lot of time to be able to unpack. So, the science of reading, the literacy brief talks about the big six, the skills and competencies that our curriculum is supposed to have, our literacy curriculum. So one of the things that we would wanna do is continue to support our teachers in these understandings, but also bring in resources that support these, these skills. So right now, the resources that we have, in absence of foundations, really needs to be, um, supplemented. So we do have units of study in literacy. A lot of the, a lot of the units need some more support where teachers are able to do more small group instruction, where they're able to do more pro, progress monitoring, and we have to give them the resources to be able to do that. Cuz our current resources, while we bought and purchased a lot of things already, still need more. Do you want me to go back?
Uh, no, no, it's okay. I, I guess I was just wondering what kind of supplemental materials, like, are, like, just looking at that prior slide. Are we talking about, is this, is this going to be like a multi-sensory approach? Is that what the?
So, so right now, in the next slide, these are some of the things that we're already doing. So we do have the Wilson Foundations Program. So the Wilson Foundations Program is K2. It is a multi-sensory program that works on six, on five of the six skills and competencies. It does not work on comprehension. So that's something that, that the teachers have to do separately. So we wanna continue to support in that. We do have a number of teachers that have also done the full Wilson three-day overview. So it wasn't last summer, I believe it was the summer before. So one of the things that we wanna be able to do is to have a number of those teachers actually trained in the Level One Wilson. So the Level One is actually a full year of support. It's pretty intensive, so there's observations that are required to be done. They have to work with a particular student that they actually have to monitor throughout the year. There's a lot of progress monitoring. Uh, the implementation is an hour a day with a particular student. The student has to be, uh, meet a criteria in order to be part of the program. But once we have these teachers Level One trained, you know, we have some, some folks that, if we have a student that needs a lot more than what's being offered in the classroom, we have teachers who then are fully trained to be able to do that. And it's all Orton Gillingham-based. And the reason we're using Wilson and Foundations is what we call Baby Wilson, because it's a preventive, prevention intervention program that you can do in general education, while Wilson is really geared toward special education students. It's because it is a Orton Gillingham-based program, and Orton Gillingham is the model that actually has been certified by the Dyslexia Association. So we wanna make sure that it's something basically the best for our students.
And is there, in this approach, like a screaming, um, that like, uh, will be occurring at the, like, beginning of teaching, reading? Like, it's kind of, um, I mean, I know we're doing eye-ready for assessment.
Mm-hmm.
And I did read through, like, what came home with my son, that for the reading piece, there's, he tested out a, like, phonological awareness.
Yeah.
Is that something that is going to be introduced, that, that the eye-ready assessments are going to be capturing that earlier? And we would be able to track?
So right now, eye-ready, uh, in K2, it does capture that. So what ends up happening, so our K2 students, it does measure phonological awareness, phonemic awareness, phonics, sight words, it does vocabulary, and it does two components of comprehension. After third grade, it does not, and that's the problem. It actually shuts off after second grade. So what we're noticing is that our older students still need support, which is why we're looking to do this. So you let me right into it. So we're, we are looking towards, um, having, uh, and I, having a plan where we get, uh, our teachers actually, um, letters trained. And LETTER stands for, um, Language Essential for Teachers of Reading and Spelling. And this is a professional learning course. It talks about, and it's not a curriculum, it talks about the explicit instruction of reading. Uh, right now, it is an expensive course. However, we are gonna be doing cohort models, so we're gonna have a cohort of 15 teachers, hopefully, this year, um, you know, go in the fall, and then every year we'll add another 15 teachers until we have most of our teachers trained. We would like to focus more on the upper grade teachers who are not accustomed to teach, to teaching reading, because it's something that was really regulated to K2. Now we have an understanding that we have to basically teach it in all grade levels, because some, some students have not gotten it. And actually, if we're gonna follow the science of reading, that has to be done explicitly, basically, again, again, K-12. So of those 15 teachers that are in the cohort, uh, all of our AIS teachers will go through the training, because again, it is essential that the teachers who are working with the neediest students have the best formal, um, training that they, that they can get. So they're gonna be part of it. Our principals are also going to be a part of the training, not the, the intensity that the teachers have. There's an administrator's piece for principals, where there's gonna be that understanding, so when they walk into the classrooms, they know how to be able to give feedback to the teachers and support the teachers.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Just backing up, it's very basic. Um, I'm, you know, there's, there's been a lot in the media about reading, and we were teaching reading wrong, and people who are like, the, you know, mothers and fathers of how to teach reading are now saying, "I was wrong," and, you know, so I think, and a lot of parents have asked me, so how, what is our approach to reading? And, um, I mean, from what I was reading about it, it was like phonetically versus balanced literacy. That's sort of the, those are sort of the two sides. But this, this sounds like it's, it's actually all of those things in one. Is that how you would describe it?
Yeah, so, so a little history. So, back when No Child Left Behind was passed, No Child Left Behind started talking about the science of reading. And they had all the different components, that in order for your program to actually be a solid program that's backed up by science, you have to have these different components, which was phonological awareness, phonemic awareness, phonics, comprehension, vocabulary. So they, at that time, they called it balanced literacy. What ended up happening was that, back in the 50s and 60s, there was this whole reading war between whole language and phonics. So, the whole language people got in on it. They didn't want nothing to do with it, and they're very, very powerful. I'm gonna be very honest, very, very powerful. They have friends who are politicians. And at the time, when No Child Left Behind was first passed, if your school district did not have all the components, you would not get federal funding. So the whole language people put a kibosh on that, because that meant that their programs then would not be used. Even though it wasn't true, because the misconception about the science of reading is that it's phonics, and that is not true. The science of reading is everything. So it's, so now they don't use balanced literacy, because balanced literacy, the term was corrupted by folks who didn't want the phonics to kinda come in. So it's now called structured literacy. And what it is, is that you're doing all the components, which includes comprehension. So students still have to read independently. Students should still be exposed to read alouds by the classroom teacher. That's how they get exposed to that high-level vocabulary that they can lift off the page if they're still struggling to read. Knowing how to spell, cuz that's the other thing. That's what I like about Wilson and Foundations. It's a, in, a decoding program that teaches them how to break the words apart, but also teaches them how to spell. And part of the science of reading as well is writing. So that's kinda been lost as well, the actual explicit teaching of writing. So while it's great to understand what a narrative account is, and talk about craft, which is important, you also have to teach what a sentence is. How to use a comma, how to use a semicolon, a prepositional phrase. And that was also kinda, certain programs, I won't name, certain programs were focusing on craft and genre versus that explicit teaching. So it's kinda going back to, we have to do all of it, so not some or the other, but all of it. Um, I, I, I would like, in another presentation, to go over the whole reading program that we're doing here, and how all those different things that we're doing are all gonna fit to support the science of reading, if that's okay.
Yeah, I think that, that would be great.
Because, and I can also talk about some of the, the mystification, demystify some of it as well, because unfortunately, with everything gets politicized, and it goes on the news, and then people start, "Oh, we're gonna find," and that's not what it is. It, it's not just phonics, because we know reading is not just phonics. Like, you have to understand what you're reading. If not, that's not reading. So.
I mean, it kinda sounds a little bit like how, I know a lot of people didn't like the Common Core math, but the thing I liked about it is that it taught my kids how to do math in their head. Like, they were really thinking about it, not just to get the question right on a test or something, you know, it was, it was a.
It was teaching conceptual knowledge.
What was going on, yeah.
Which is before, they were, it was teaching arithmetic.
Right.
And arithmetic is wrote. So it's really, so, so it's, it's kinda like the same thing.
Are you finding it more, like, challenging post-pandemic, I imagine? Is that like, part of why this is?
Uh, so, the pandemic definitely did not help. I will say that, uh, districts that we're using, for example, Foundations is a multi-sensory, um, phonics program. In my previous district, doing it virtually was not great. You know, so it's, it's one of those things that it's very hard to teach online. We were doing it with full fidelity. It was, it was really hard, potentially because it's a multi, because it's also a multi-sensory program. So if you, if you're not manipulating the cards, and the, there's these magnetic, uh, letters that the kids put together and make words, and they're supposed to be skywriting. If you're not doing that, then you're missing part of the, the importance of the program that's really helping them to internalize the concepts around reading. So, so yeah, so COVID was, did not help us with that. But, but it's okay, we're gonna, we're gonna plow through, you know, so. The other thing that we wanna continue to support around reading is, again, continuing our RTI MTSS tiers of support. Uh, our teachers who have been working on this have been doing a really good job of really supporting teachers in the classroom, reading, identifying what, uh, how to progress monitor our child, how to do a specific intervention that works. So we wanna continue to do that, of course, ensuring that we're still, uh, introducing culturally responsive literature for our students, and how to introduce culturally responsive literature, and how to identify culturally responsive literature. Again, we're gonna also hopefully start introducing the science of writing, cuz writing is kind of a piece that we haven't done a lot of work on, but we need to kinda go back to and look at, and, and another huge piece is that, because we understand that our current reading program needs to be, needs more supplementation, we have been looking at other reading programs, um, with the help of the teachers, and looking at what is out there, and I will say this very frankly, there is nothing out there that's completely aligned to the science of reading. That does not exist. But at least trying to find something that's robust enough that'll meet us where we have some, some gaping holes. Like, right now, we wanna do a lot of small group instruction. We don't have a lot of the resources to be able to do that, like having enough decodable readers. So decodable readers are those books that when you're teaching kids how to read, that the books are, let's say if you're, um, working on, uh, the long A sound, then having a book that has multiple opportunities to practice the long A sound, and that's a decodable reader. Now, it's not a juicy book, because you're not gonna get a lot of, like, comprehension prompts out of it, but the purpose of the book is to help with decoding, helping the student being able to understand how to lift words off the page. So we need more support in that. So hopefully, whatever program the teachers seem to like, we're gonna, we would like to pilot that next year, so it wouldn't be like a K5 implementation. It would be certain grades that would be involved in piloting the program.
Just a quick question about the RTI process and how that's being restructured.
So.
Yeah, I just, um, I, this, I know it's probably many principals ago, many administrators ago, many things, but I found what was challenging about having been in that process with my child was the, um, was, were like teachers that didn't know them and hadn't encountered them, um, sitting in on the process, and, and, and that's, maybe that's best practice, and, but I, I just, it felt like it was something you could never get out of. It was a little bit Hotel California-ish when it was there. And then, uh, you know, to me, like, I was always given this data, and the data story to me was that there was, um, no way that these gaps would close if we continued to do what we were doing. And I think, maybe I was told once to do a, a sight word scavenger hunt around my house, and then I literally gave up. So I just, um, it would be interesting to hear how that, and, and, and it was, everybody was trying to do their best, so it's not, it's not with any disrespect for that, but how are we changing that process?
Well, it's been changed exponentially. So we have a, a whole new way of looking at students. So we have student learning profiles that have been created. Again, one of the TOSSAs is here, Leslie, who's been working with the teachers, as well as Nadia Abramson. So the teachers, um, so when a student, we, one of the things that we did was, when you look at RTIs, there's three tiers of intervention. And what we did was, we actually defined what each tier of intervention looks like, what the frequency is in each tier, and we actually identified specific strategies. So that experience that you have is not the experience you would have right now if your child went through IST. Cuz we don't even call it RTI, we call it the IST Committee, which is the Instructional Support Team. So we're also trying to remove deficit language from, from our process. So if a teacher is working with a student, and they're noticing that what they're trying is not working, they would send an email to Leslie or to Nadia, say, you know, "This is what I'm observing," and they would come, they would introduce a strategy, as well as a progress monitoring tool, so they can see whether the strategy was working, you know.
And they would have that same view of that profile of the students, and they have more of a whole.
That would all be crazy. So when, now when students actually go through this, uh, through IST, there is all this data, but it's actually been strategies that are supposed to be proven to work. They're evidence-based. Because what ends, what ended up happening a lot in our teacher preparation programs, these things weren't actually taught in teacher preparation programs. You know, a lot of theory gets taught in these programs. And then you come into a school system and you learn curriculum. And curriculum and teaching practices are not necessarily the same thing. Like, you need both. You need a good curriculum, but you also need to know, "When I see a student doing this, it means this, and I got a strategy for that." So that's one of the things that we're really working.
And then you have backup.
Yeah. And then what they have done is, and it's actually in here, I'm gonna show you, they created actually a Google Classroom that's full of different resources for students. And not just academic, but also, but also students who need social emotional support, executive functioning, uh, attention. There is progress monitoring tools there, so the teachers don't have to try to create them. It's all there sideways, so it's also a bit uniform. So people aren't coming in kinda like with their own thing and trying to figure it out. So they've really worked really hard on that. I mean, that Google Classroom is like exemplar, I have to say.
And the parents are, I assume.
I'm sorry.
When are they, when is the parent, like, pulled into that?
So the parent, well, the parent's always involved throughout.
Right.
I mean, the expectation is that as soon as a student is struggling, the parent is informed, the parent is told, the information is shared with the parent, so that they know, so it's not a surprise. And then also, the goals and the strategies that are being identified. So it's very explicit.
Did you set up a, a formal meeting with that student?
Well, the meeting is with the teachers.
Right.
The parents can always be, can always be a part of it, but no matter what, they're gonna know what the result was. So. Any other questions around that? So they've worked really, really hard. And again, I actually have, uh, you can put the link there so you can see all the work that they've done all year. Um, so in terms of, any other questions around reading, sorry? Cuz reading's juicy. And I could talk about it all night, so I'm gonna be going, but. So with math, we are gonna continue again. We wanna keep supporting math, uh, making sure that our units of study are aligned to the next generation standards, really focusing on math interventions, cuz that's something that's get lost. So we have students that are struggling in math, and we wanna make sure that we are supporting them in math as well. We are working with BOCs to support our upper grade teachers with students that are still, again, struggling with basic arithmetic, which means that then they'll struggle with more complex concepts. So giving them strategies to support those students, and as well as development calming assessments. And then in science, um, we do, we, this year, we did implement our investigation labs. So the state is requiring that students three through five complete certain labs. So there's one that's done in third grade, uh, two, one in fourth grade, and two in fifth grade. So when they leave elementary school, four complete labs. So when they leave elementary school, four complete labs have to be done in different areas. Those same labs, however more robust, are also done at the middle school. They have to complete four before they exit the middle school. School district has to have evidence that we did the labs, that we documented it, and that we scored it. And then it eventually goes up to the high school. So one of the reasons that they're doing that is because the new fifth and eighth grade test, they're not, uh, they're not science tests of a grade level. They're actually cumulative. So the fifth grade science test is a K-5 test. The eighth grade science test is a six-eight test. So if there are concepts that are being missed, it's going to come out then in that final assessment.
By these standards, what makes something a lab?
I'm sorry?
By these standards, what would make something a lab? Exactly.
So, um, like, third grade, the lab that they do is called Cloud in, Cloud in a Bottle. So there's a weather lab, there's one that's on machines and electricity, there's one that's on, um, trying to remember. So it's the four major concepts in science that they have to, that they have to do. And the titles are the same when they get to the middle school, but obviously in the middle school, it's a little bit more complex. That's one of the reasons why we implemented Science 21, because Science 21 is completely aligned to the next generation science standards. It's also inquiry-based, and also the folks that were involved in Science 21 helped develop the assessment. So I figured go to the folks that actually developed the assessment. So that, and
Didn't like farm it out to someone who paid a lot of lobbying money?
Yeah, but, and the folks who were involved are actual teachers. So they're actual science teachers, so. And then this year, Science 21 is two to five, so fourth and fifth grade were trained the previous year. This year, it was grades two and three. Next year will be K-1. So we'll have a K-5 implementation next year.
A quick question. When they do the assessments of the labs, are they, do they have to, I'll probably use the wrong word here, just do them, pass them, or like, are they assessed? Like, what happens if you don't do well on that assessment?
It's not, it's not like that, no. So they just have to kind of go through it.
It's like you're going through it?
Right, right. So it's almost like a practice. And the reason that the state did this is that they wanted to ensure that robust science was being done at all levels. You know, so depending, there were some school districts where, at the elementary level, not here, but in some school districts, where there were some teachers that would skip science. And they, because they weren't science people. So they would teach reading, they would teach math, they might teach social, but they weren't always teaching science. And then when the students got to the secondary level, there were all these multiple gaps, because they were missing certain things. So this was a way for the state to ensure that our kids were getting everything. So when they went up to the high school and took Regents exams, they would not get a diploma because they couldn't pass certain Regents exams. You know, so, so it was almost like an accountability piece, even though they're not collecting it. So, even though I'm always afraid that a van is going to show up and ask me for folders, but they said that they're not collecting it, but they want us to do them. So we're doing them.
You know, we, how do we, um, keep track of that? Is it just like a, a, a check sheet by the student saying that they did the lab, or?
We do have a form for each student.
Okay.
There is a folder, and then when the teachers are done, they fill it out.
Okay.
And that folder will follow them. Elementary, it follows them to the middle school. Middle school, it'll follow them to the high school. In addition, if we get a student from another district, they're supposed to bring proof that they did the lab, the labs. If not, we have to then administer the labs. So this year, it's the first year that we have the grade five and grade eight new science test. Next June, there will be, uh, two new Regents exams, a biology, and then the earth and space science Regents. And then 2026 will be chemistry and physics. And then we'll be done with the science, the, the implementation of the next gen standards. It would be the understanding that we all know it. All right. So we want to continue again our social studies, units of study, supporting the seal civic readiness, the inquiry-based framework, which is the alignment to the social studies standards, and also making sure that we have some resources for our teachers, so that they can support the units of study. So particularly at the elementary level, we don't have a social studies textbook. So we want some resources that will support those units that the teachers are teaching.
I'm sorry, I feel like I asked this and I keep forgetting the answer, but do we have the seal of civic readiness? Are we working on it?
I believe it was approved, so we're, this is the year that we're starting to do it.
Oh, that's exciting. Okay, great.
We put in the application last August.
Okay, great. And how does the information, I feel like it's something that I know my daughters heard about, but then I'm like, okay, and? And so how does this get to them, to students who actually want to participate in it?
So at the high school, I believe that they, they, they do their PR around it, you know, in the, in the social studies department, the history department. So because it's, um, in order to get it, there's multiple points and projects that they have to do.
Right.
You know, so it's kind of complex. So it's not available to every student, so it would be for the students that are interested in getting it. Because it's a lot of work. And then we want to continue our research, research-based pedagogy. So going back to the discussion around RTI and our instructional support teams. So there's a lot of work already that was done around supporting teachers. These are some of the topics that the teachers have been engaged in. And this, and hopefully this will open. Let's see. Give me a second. I wanted to show you, oh, sorry, Mike. I wanted to show you the Google Classroom that Leslie and Nadia created, because it's amazing. And I thought I could go to it. Ah, why is my name so long? Oh. Okay. So these are all the resources that our teachers have available. This is an example, behavior, tracking sheets, so if they wanted to progress monitor. So all these different links is what Leslie and Nadia put together to support teachers. Let's hear what practices. So if I wanted to support students in fluency, I can click on it, and I have all these different trials, including OT and PT, and speech. It's just an example. And I know that every time something is added, I get an email. So I think every day I get an email that something's being added, so just wanted to show you the work that they've been doing, because they've been doing some great work.
And is there going to be, like, feedback on what's there, and any ranking of, like, things that have been especially helpful? Like, a way of sort of managing it going forward, or?
Feedback from
Teachers who are active?
Teachers are very vocal about the feedback. And we appreciate that.
I'm wondering how to be incorporated.
No, so, yeah, it's, anything that is, if something is missing or lacking or not, there, there is always an opportunity to continue to enhance it. So. All right. The other, the other thing is, we want to also continue supporting, again, social emotional learning, giving teachers, again, opportunities if they want to be, continue training in responsive practices, trauma, professional development, supporting students who need executive, who have executive functioning needs. That's something that's been, um, a big area that, that teachers and administrators have said they would like to see some support in. Of course, supporting our ENL students, and providing professional development around strategies and supports.
Is there any, um,
Yep.
There, last time I asked, I think there was no responsive classroom training really for the middle school and up level. Has there been anything?
It's open to anyone. Because they have different categories.
They do. So have we trained, are our middle school and high school teachers?
There's some teachers who have been trained in responsive classroom, or not, just elementary. And in the middle school, my understanding is that sixth grade is doing second steps. So they've been trying to implement that particular program. The high school is doing responsive, not, not responsive, not restorative, just a bit restorative practices. So they work with the Duchess Mediation Center, and they have a guidance counselor who's working around that.
So teachers are being required, I think what we're saying, are teachers being required or given time during the day to be trained with restorative practices, or is it that they have to sign up on their own, and it's their own?
So if they're, what we, what we try to do is, we try to do it through BOSIs. So there's been opportunities where teachers have been able to be trained in the summer. So some of the trainings have been in the summer, some of them have been during the school year, and it's been through BOSIs, because they need a certain amount of people in order to, because again, the price changes depending on the people, so it would be during the school day.
So we're releasing them from their teaching
Yep, if there's, yeah.
But does it look like, um, I mean, you know, when we had it demonstrated for us, at, for what it looks like at the elementary level, you know, it was this very, very proactive approach. And from what I understand about the restorative work, it's a little bit more reactive, or is it being used in a proactive way? Or, like, at the
Where? At the secondary level? Well, at the high school, it's more of a proactive way. Uh, I would say at Roundbow, um, I think it's, it's in its beginning stages that we're doing some of the work. So that's why they wanted to introduce second steps.
What, what is?
Sixth grade.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with second
So second step is a Castle Program. I'm not as familiar with it as I am with Ruler. So it's around, again, supporting our students around social emotional learning. There's a guidance counselor that's been implementing it. I can send you some more information about it. And it started in sixth grade, so I know the seventh and eighth graders are not involved in it. So they wanted to kind of pilot it at, at the sixth grade. And then this is just some topics in technology and assessment that we want to continue to, again, support our teachers in. We also want to see if there were a couple of teachers that we can send to some conferences around technology, artificial intelligence, performance-based assessment.
I feel like we have like kind of a, between the social emotional and then this, there's this digital literacy, digital citizenship kind of opportunity that I, I don't know, are we doing anything around that, around?
So our library media specialists touch on digital citizenship. So it's basically being responsible on the internet. Yeah. So we are doing some stuff around that, yeah. And actually, that's part of the computer science standards. So part of the computer science standards that we also have to implement is around the digital citizenship. Yeah.
And is there a way that we assess that? I guess I'm just, you know, wondering, because of, there's so much information and data now about the impacts, the so, the, like, the emotional and mental health impacts of mostly related to social media. But, um, you know, I feel like a lot of kids enter sixth grade and it's their first, um, you know, experience of independence, and they're given phones. If they're, you know, we have a high sort of walking community here. So, you know, they're, or people are on the bus for a long period of time, so they get their phones, they become more independent. And then it sort of opens up this door that I don't know that, like, we, I think parents either assume they're, you know, they're going to be able to handle it, or, you know, but everyone has a different approach. So I'm just wondering if there's, and I don't know if it's a curriculum thing. I don't, maybe it's just outside of that, and it's more of a information
I haven't, it's not, so when you look at like the computer science standards, it doesn't necessarily touch upon that. But if you look at the social emotional framework, you know, it, it kind of talks a little bit about, about wellness.
Right.
And what to do in terms of keeping yourself well. You know, so, um, that is an area that we, we do need support in. We have to continue, not just in terms of professional learning for teachers, but then also implementing it for the students as well. So trying to find supports that can come in and do some of these trainings hasn't been all that easy, but we're going to continue to look for stuff.
Would that be something that would be welcome through?
Yeah. I mean, I do have, um, I just met with someone recently that does some trauma-informed work, and touches a little bit upon that, but we're going to have to see, like, in terms of funding, kind of how that goes. I'm trying to see if she can kind of go through BOSIs. Because she's an independent, and she's not cheap, so it's like, ah. But the work that she's doing, so she has a very culturally responsive, trauma-informed work. So it's exciting work, but like I said, she's, she's not, she ain't cheap.
Yeah.
You know, so.
I do know the sixth grade, uh, technology class does some stuff around social media, digital citizenship. Honestly, I've seen it as a parent this year of a sixth grader. I think it's well timed. But, yeah, I, I think, I think we're all struggling with the same thing, like educators, parents, students. And so, um, I think we're really open to finding some ways to do more education with parents and kids. It's
Yeah.
A lot of what we deal with every day.
Yeah, I mean, just sitting on the other side of that, knowing that we have, you know, discipline that emerges, issues that emerge around it. It just feels like, and it's not, it's like the standards are the standards. It just feels like, whoops, like now we're over at Chachi, but we skipped over the thing that our kids utilize most and, and need scaffolding around.
Yeah, no, no, point taken. Yep. So, so is this the money that I'm begging for approval? So that we can do all this amazing, amazing work, because one of the things is we want to continue to support the work we've been doing, and again, be able to support the new initiatives that are really going to touch children. You know, so again, they're, they're necessary, they're needed, and they're going to really meet the needs of our students. So.
And when you, you have it going through BOSIs, so
Yeah, so if you see
This is the total cost, though?
Yep, so most of it will be, which, which means it will be addable.
And how does this compare to the PD, um, budget in past years, or?
It's a little less.
Okay. Well, and is it all PD, or is it all, I guess it is all PD. So this isn't any, like, licensing for?
No, 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 yeah, yeah, so.
Is the letters training specifically for, like, grades three through six, or who's that training for?
No, it's not specifically for grades three through six. It's for AIS teachers are in this first cohort. What I would like is for eventually all teachers to be trained. So this first kind of group is, uh, our teachers who, from multiple grade levels. So we have representation from lower, as well as upper, in every building. So we wanted there to be kind of like a broad range. And then the next cohort will have another set of teachers and another set of teachers. Because right now, K-2 at least has Foundations, so they're doing something that's Orin Gillingham-based. Our upper grade teachers don't have access to that, because it's, uh, Foundation's not really appropriate for the upper grades, a little too babyish. So they need something a little bit more, um, at their level, so they won't be, like, disengaged from it.
So how does letters align to Foundations?
Because letters is not a curriculum. It's, actually, what letters is going to do is going to reinforce the techniques that are in Foundations, because the techniques of Foundations are based on Orin Gillingham's strategies.
So is it the same, I'm just not familiar with it, that's why I'm asking the questions. Is it similar to, like, a Wilson-trained person, or OG-certified person? Like, teaching methodologies? Is it a different program, so it's not
It's not, so they don't want to say that they're a program, like, at all. They talk about specifically teaching practices. So it's explicit teaching practices on how to teach reading.
So is it small group practices?
No, so the teachers, so the teachers go four, they're going to be pulled out four times in the year. They're going to be doing a full day. It's almost like a college course. It's almost like a college course in reading.
But how does that correlate to what's the practice in the classroom? I guess that's what I'm not having a hard time understanding.
Because what they're learning there, they have to actually do it in the classroom. They have to implement it in the classroom.
So what will that look like?
So when they go in, when they're doing reading, whatever topics, so let's say if they're talking about specifically on how to introduce phonological awareness, when the teachers go back into the classroom, they're introducing phonological awareness with the same methods that they were taught in the training.
And that method is different than OG or Wilson?
It's aligned, because again, we're talking about, when we're talking about evidence-based strategies, the methodologies look similar, but research says that they work. So we're talking about teaching practices, not a curriculum and not a program. Again, Wilson is a program based on Again, Wilson is a program based on Orin Gillingham methodology. Letters is a course that talks about explicit teaching strategies on how to teach reading.
So is it going to the language comprehension skills that the kids need to learn?
It's going to go the whole thing.
Or is it the decoding skills that the kids need to learn?
Yes.
Yes to what?
To both.
All of those six pillars, the phonics, okay, or is it six, five, five or six?
So if, if, when you're looking for that first cohort, are you zeroing in, I know the A I S. If, let's just choose a sixth grade teacher, are you looking for someone that's interested? Or would it be an, an E L A? Or would it be, let's say, a social studies teacher that might just be interested in implementing these prac, like how? I'm going back to the, who, like who's the target group? And I'm thinking just sixth grade, I understand the elementary, I'm looking, thinking of middle school.
We're looking for folks who are willing to do the training, I'm going to implement it. So the, the first, so what they call the first believers.
Yeah, that's, that's fine, I think that's a good idea, I just didn't know.
And then these are, you know, we do rise every, after school and.
The rise after school is separate from the.
Yeah, cause that's.
Secondary, is, is the?
They, we do, we do a K twelve.
It's K twelve, okay, but it's completely separate from what the city is offering in terms of after school?
So what it is, is when, when it's like six weeks before the E L A, the math, the science, all those different assessments. So it's almost like a tutoring that happens after school with the teachers.
You're recommended for it, right?
Yeah, and we, we've been doing it for a couple of years, it used to be called I R P.
Oh, okay.
Yes, so we gave it a more positive name. So that's what it is, the old I R P.
Okay, so it's not.
And then one of the other things I didn't talk a lot about, but we are looking to have all our elementary teachers trained in Dibbles, which is one of the, one of the literacy screeners, the universal screeners, that we have our A I S teachers using. They've been using it for the, they were trained last year, they fully implemented it this year. Next year, we would like all our teachers to have the training, so that way they can do it in the classroom.
And is that, is that like a, what does that look like, that assessment? Is that like kind of a paper-based or like?
No, so it's going to be computerized, it, it used to be paper-based. The nice thing about having it computerized is it does the calculations in for you. And it does the different domains and you, and it actually color codes it for you. So and it comes up in red, you're like, oh, this is an area that I need to, to plan for, for, for my students. Yeah. It goes a little bit deeper than fun, than, than I ready in terms of literacy, because it's on literacy. And then there is one that's just for math, but we've been using the literacy one. Anything else? And that's, that's my presentation, and I'm sorry I went so long.
So Saggy, just, I, I think all these things are great. And they're, to me, they're designed for those teachers that are interested in P D, want to learn something new. The, one of the concerns is that those teachers that are, you know, doing their thing, right? May not be interested much in some of these things. Where do we find the time to work with them? Meaning, you, you have, I know you have the half day, days. You have the faculty meeting, which I know not, is sometimes going to be nuts and bolts stuff and sometimes going to be pedagogical. I'm just, with all this great work, how do we get to everybody? And that's, I know it's hard, but.
Yeah, but that's what our professional learning days are, because on those professional learning days, so for example, the science of reading is something that on those professional learning days, everyone has to sign up for a session. You know, so there are certain things that are required that even the folks who are like, I don't know if this is for me, well, you're going to sit in the session and you're going to at least have an understanding of it. You know, and hopefully, the goal would be that those first believers get excited about it, become competent in it. And we start then incorporating more and more people into it. It's very hard to try to get everyone on board. And then what ends up happening, that you have folks that are just not going to do it. Sometimes there are folks who want to do it, but they want to see someone else do it first. And go and see how it's working out for them, ask questions, and then they're on board. You know, so it's kind of those, those, those levels that we're working on right now.
Do we, do we, do we need to maybe think about making, I'll just throw this out there, a half-day P D day, a full-day P D day, right? Which now gives you six hours instead of two hours, right? Or an, an extra meeting per month or every other month with the staff to allow more time to work with the staff, which would be, you know, would have to be negotiated, I understand that. But just, you know, it's just one of the things that all people worry about is getting to everybody. And these are all great programs, but I think sometimes we, the, the, the group that attends them are the ones that.
The choir.
Always want to get better and better. And, and we want to try to work with, try to get everybody better, and that's the hard part, right?
Like in, in technology adoption, there is this kind of like description of exactly what you're talking about. There's early adopters, there's late early adopters, there's the masses, there's a different term for it. And then there's the laggards. But what, you know, there's some people like you, you may never really reach, but, you know, if you just think about like the iPhone, it's then become something that like you have no choice but to adopt because everyone is using that tool or some, you know, version of that, whether it's, it's, you know, a, a mobile phone, but, or smartphone. But the, I, yeah, I wonder about the same thing because, and you do get this, like where is that point where it's kind of tips and it becomes the culture that people all want to do this?
I mean, some, some of these things that we just saw, like the Science 21, that, there was no optional with that, right? So teachers, that was like release time for teachers. So that is teachers, not for huge amounts of time, but not in their class. I think it was half-days throughout the year to do this, either online or the training at BOSI's to do that. Teachers' participation in the I S T process, teachers doing like the K one, two math, new math program. That, none of that is waiting for early adopters, right? It's like everybody. So I think it's like kind of this blend of some of the things we're doing. It has to be release time, because there's only so many P D days we can put in. Next year, we are going back to like the full day instead of the half-days. Like, you know, I, I'm not sure what's better or, or, you know, more effective or less effective. But, but then for a bigger thing like letters, which is expensive, even through BOSI's and time-intensive, that, that one is more like, we're going to take five years and work on getting everybody, or however many years it would take. So it's like a mix, but there certainly are things that are everybody and it involves a lot of release time usually, because.
With that letters thing you're talking about or anything like that, is it, does it become something then like? Cause I know everyone, I know there's collaboration for lesson planning and across, you know, these teams. So then is it something that kind of pushes into that? So that teachers kind of, I know pushes in is like a classroom term, so I'm trying. But it doesn't sort of find its way in that way too?
There, there are opportunities for that where at the grade level meetings, there are topics that are covered as well, as well as data. You know, and we have done, so for example, when we were looking at supporting teachers for tier one, we actually released teachers for two hours and Leslie and Nadia did a two-hour block of professional learning in here. And we did it across two weeks. So teachers signed up and then we use subs, you know, and that is something that we're going to continue to do. So when we look at next year, there are going to be, yeah, like Matt said, there are some initiatives that it's now whether you're adopting it or everyone's doing it because we have to. You know, because we have to adhere to the standards and we have to adhere to the requirements of the state. So there is a professional development calendar that we do create and we give people time so that subs and people are released. We can do it a lot because it's very disruptive then for the teachers who are actually teaching the students. So we try to be mindful of it. So for example, this year, second and third grade was doing Science 21. Fourth and fifth grade had a break because they did it last year. So they weren't being pulled for those sessions anymore. And so we, we could have worked with them on something else, because they weren't being pulled six times a year for the half-day sessions.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm not in favor of pulling teachers all the time, because we lose instruction time.
Yeah, and the teachers are very vocal about that and I understand that, yeah.
Yeah, I'm just mentioning trying to use other time, which we need to be creative, to try to reach the, the, the whole group. So you're, you're, basically, when you talk about letters and you have your administrators being, you know, trained, maybe not as in-depthly as. But if the administrator can, you know, discuss that with the whole staff at a meeting or half a meeting, you know, and you do that over a course of time, everybody's becoming indoctrinated with that program over the course of that year. So that maybe they, I'm not saying they all like it, but you're hearing it, right? And, and, and then you're, then you go into the next year with the cohort, so I'm just, you know. I, I'm just trying to think of different ways of trying to reach the masses.
Yep, yep, makes sense, agree.
I think it's always been a balance of, you know, because it, I mean, we're balancing cost and time and all those things. And also, you know, like you said, that they become ambassadors for the program if they like it. Which with responsive classroom, that's, we started with a pretty small group and then people really loved it and then people were begging to do it, so.
Yeah, that's great, it's.
Yeah. I'm, there's probably not a perfect way, but.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, that was so much hard work.
Yeah. Okay, next we have Heather Chadwell Dennis, our Assistant Superintendent for People Personnel Services. And her entire team is here, I want to acknowledge.
All right, well, welcome, board members and Dr. Landall. My name is Heather Chadwell Dennis, I'm the Assistant Superintendent for People Personnel Services. Thrilled to be presenting to you. So we'll jump right in. So this is our team, and some of them are here with us tonight. I see Terry left, okay. So Joan Edmondson is here, she's on our team, Christina Bartley chairs secondary. And Alexis McCoy Jaquil does preschool, secondary, elementary. Christina does some preschool, it's kind of all over the, whoever is available. The other people is, we have Jane Zervone has just joined us. She is supporting the preschool special education. She is a teacher that worked here and she is learning the process, an elementary teacher. We also have Azalina Tugle, who works in our office. She supports out-of-district C S E, five oh fours K eight at the secondary level at the high school up here. Nick DiMarco is working up here on the five oh fours and homeschooled students. We have about eighty children in the homeschooling program. We have Jennifer Mastrick Nicola, she supports Alexis for elementary. She does all of our frontline verification. Dana Quintana, who supports Christina, helps with the Medicaid billing. Terry Betancourt, who was here and has left, she helps us find all of our preschool providers, which is unbelievably difficult to do right now. So she spends all day long on the phone trying to coordinate providers. And then we have Suzanne DeCastro, she supports all of our finances, and then Joan is here with us. So it is, we are busy, busy. So tonight, I'm going to go through four particular points. We're going to look at students' supports under I D E A, and I'll talk a little bit about that. The section five oh four of the Rehab Act, which is supported by the Office of Civil Rights. We'll look at out-of-district programming, contractual services. And although Saggy did touch on some professional development, there's a few that are very specific to special education that I'll be going through. If any, you know, if there's any questions at any time, feel free to, to stop me, I'm, I would talk about this forever. So I D E A is the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. It was enacted in nineteen seventy-five, there's been some revisions, but that's the initial adoption. It is a federal law, so all of the United States are required to follow the rules of the I D E A. And it ensures that students with disabilities have access to a free, appropriate public education, which you'll hear as F A P, you'll hear like, does your child have F A P? It provides guidelines for special education services, it protects students and caregivers' rights, and supports early intervention programs. So that's our littles that are three years old, so three years old to twenty-one. It protects the rights of those individuals as well. So then layered on top of that is the Part two hundred and Part two oh one, but predominantly the Part two hundred regulations that are monitored by the New York State Education Department. So there's the federal regulations, I D E A, and there's about two hundred plus regulations that New York State lays on top of, I D E A. So I always joke, I can't imagine working in a different state, because I'm so used to all these other laws you need to work inside. And tho, these, these regulations provide comprehensive guidance and requirements for identification, evaluation, the individualized education programming, service delivery, the procedural safeguards, and discipline procedures for students with disabilities in New York State. So these are very specific to New York State, so that they receive F A P, Free and Appropriate Public Education, in the least restrictive environment. And these are always tested by case law. So if the, you know, that's where our attorneys are so helpful to us, because they're telling us what are being tested in other states and how it will affect New York State. Recently, there was one COVID that was backed up a little bit, where we had to educate kids right before their, to their, just before their twenty-second birthday, and that has been challenged, so we've backed it back up to the year that they turned twenty-one. So we're always in this adjustment based on what case law is, is occurring. And then there's section five oh four of the Rehab Act. This again is a federal law, it's overseen by the Office of Civil Rights, where individual education plans are overseen by I D E A. So this is a federal law that prohibits discrimination on the basis of disability in any program or activity that receives funding, including public schools, colleges, and universities, and many private schools. So your I D E A goes all the way till the day that you graduate or exit school. And section five oh four goes all the way through. So as an adult, you could have a five oh four plan in your work environment. Any questions so far? Okay. So here are the numbers. So students that are supported under I D E A, so these are the students that are in our six buildings that have I E Ps, which is an individual education program. It's a lot of letters in this field. So these are the students comparatively to last year, it's about six less students. If you compared my presentation last year, you will see an almost ident, it looks different, different colors. But a comparative data year to year, you can see there's about, you know, six less students. So at Glennum, we have eighty-one students, Sargent, we have forty-seven, J B F is twenty-four, South Avenue is twenty-eight, and Rhombout, one hundred and fourteen, and Beacon High School is one fifty. One of the initiatives we're working very diligently on is providing as many services as we can to children in their home building. So that's a rollout over time. So right now, J V Forrestal has a very small ratioed class, like little teeny classes for students with disabilities, but they don't have as many of our integrated programs, where you have a larger class with two teachers in the classroom. Glennum has a larger number of those type of programs. And so students from J B F may have gone to Glennum or anywhere else, depending. So we're working on making sure that we represent all children in all spaces. And it takes, you know, planning time to do that. So these are our five oh fours of the Rehab Act of nineteen seventy-three, again, overseen by the Office of Civil Rights, so different compliance board, and these are the numbers that you can see there. Glennum, Sargent, J B F, South, and Rhombout are all supported directly out of our office. Beacon High School is chaired from the high school, because there's just more there, and we process all of the paperwork. So all of the meetings that are held in any building, anywhere, there are minimally four administrators, three administrators looking at it before it goes out to a parent. So we all see it, and then every person in the office also looks at it as a double check, just to make sure we have everything that needs to be. So if you have a child at J B F or at Beacon High School or South Avenue, they look exactly the same. So that you understand as the consumer, supporting your child, the, what, how we are programming for your child. I hope that makes sense, so it's very consistent through our department. So this is the staffing. We appreciate every staff member, every day. So we currently have fifty-two special education teachers supporting the programming, and we're projected exactly the same. And we're doing that through some retirements, some movements around, so we're looking at the exact same number. We currently have speech-language pathologists, we have, oh, Terry came back, here's Terry. So six speech pathologists. All of them are state and national licensed, amazing, and we're projected the same platform. Occupational therapists, so last year, if you did the comparison, I had said that we had one occupational therapist on contract. And I was really hoping to get a full-time O T to add to our unit. And we were suc- And we were successful. So we currently have 4.5 occupational therapists, and we're projected for the same. Physical therapists, again, if you compared to last year, we had 1.5 on contract. I came to you and said, we're really trying to put one more on our staff. But we needed to meet with the civil service. We had to canvas. We had to work with the unit to make sure that the physical therapist was recommended, represented in the contract. And so while we worked all year on it, it is still a goal for us this year. And we have, we're in the interview process right now, so we're really excited about that. So we're very hopeful, which would reduce our contractual costs, because right now, all of that is contracted out. We have eight social workers, and we're projected for nine, which I'm going to leave to the end, because I'm going to explain why. Where, it would be .5 at Rombout and .5 at Beacon High School. And at the end, I'll explain why we're looking at that. And we have six school psychologists, and we're projecting the same for next year. All right, so our students were in out-of-district or alternative placements. So these are our kiddos who need more specialized programming and are not inside one of our six buildings here. So in BOCs, we have 18. And that doesn't mean Duchess BOCs, which I'll show you again in just a minute. It could be Putnam Northern Wester, Orange Ulster, Ulster, Southern Westchester. It could be any of those BOCs components. Right now, we have 102 preschoolers that we're supporting. Special Act schools are like Abilities First, Anderson, Andrus, any of those are 853 schools. Homeschooled students, so while I said we had like 80-ish homeschool students, seven of them receive services that we are providing support to. So they might come to our building, or it might be virtual, depending on the need of the student. Parentally placed, we have Hudson Hills and New Covenant inside Beacon. So we have seven students in those locations that we support. And then we have one that is completely homebound through the CSE, who does not leave their home. So in total, that's 160 students. So here are some of the locations for BOCs where our kiddos get on buses and go every day. We have children at the Salt Point Center and the Alternative High School. At Orange Ulster, we've got kids at Middle Hope Elementary and Marguerite Flood. We have a student at the Rylake Campus in Southern Westchester. And then PNW BOCs, we have at Fox Meadows, Solmers, and Walden. So in total, for that, we have about 18 students there. And here's the projected cost. So from, the bottom number is what was the budget for this year, was 1.8 million. And then the projected cost is just a percentage increase at just over 2. So the increase is about 266,000. Backing up for one second, in the BOCs component, in these BOCs programs, every, the program costs a base amount, and then speech is in addition, OT is in addition, physical therapy is in addition, so it's a huge calculation for one student. These are different. If you go to Abilities First, it's all in one. So your speech, OT, PT is all in that one programming bill. So we have 25 students in these locations. Abilities First, the Abilities First has two locations that we work with, Fireman's Way and New Windsor. Anderson is, I'm sure, familiar. Astor Learning, Center for Discovery, Spectrum Services in Kingston. Deveraux has two sites. They've got one in Red Hook, and then they have one south of here. New York Cares, Green Chimneys, they've got two campuses. Kaplan, Hawthorne Cedar Knolls, Judge Rottenberg is in Massachusetts. Yorktown High, Mount Pleasant Cottage, the New York School for the Deaf, Sail, the Summit, Westchester Exceptional, and Educational Learning Experience. And we have 25 students in those programs. So this is the special act funding for that. Our budget last year was 2,566. We're expecting a slight decrease in that, 14,395. And it feels funny to have a decrease, but we are finding that more and more, we're struggling to find placements in locations because of staffing concerns. And so we are relying as heavily as we can on our BOCs systems to support us in that way.
Heather, these costs are aided, correct?
They are aided. Yes, they are aided. Yes, thank you.
And the staffing concerns is like having sufficient staff?
Yeah, having sufficient staff. Yeah, it's just, it's just hard everywhere, finding sufficient. So you may have a student who goes to like Abilities First, hypothetically. Like, I'm just hypothetical, but they might not have a speech pathologist there. So they're, we have to provide that in some way. And it is aidable. We do have a whole process where we put, it's called stacking on high-cost kids to get aid back. Yeah. All right, so not to be confused on this slide. These are parentally placed students. So Arlington would be Lord's, right? So Irving, so all these places have parentally placed locations like Lord's, St. Mary's, St. Martin de Porus, like all of those locations. So if there's a student, I'm just going to use Lord's as an example. If there's a student at Lord's who gets services there, special education services, Arlington can bill back the home district for those services, so we would pay Arlington. It's the same with us for Hudson Hills or New Covenant. If a Waptoner student is attending Hudson Hills, we bill back for those services. Okay. Right now, we have 71 homeschools in collaboration, 71 homeschooled students. Does not mean that they have IEPs. It just means that we are supporting them through their quarterly reports and their home plans. And we have 39 unhoused students in the district that we provide protections under McKenna Vento. And we work very closely with our social workers. They go through our office, and they're provided additional assistance right from the moment that they register.
Just a quick question. At the beginning, you said 80 students are homeschooled?
It's just under 80. Yeah, 71.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the students that are unhoused, I know that we, if they're in the system, that they're allowed to continue at the school, that's the school there where they'd been receiving education. Is this something where, like, do we know how many students have been consistently unhoused? And then who, how much have been added? And do we know when that happens?
Yes. So every, at the end of every year, so in May, in the summertime, we have two social workers that come in, and they verify again. They call every single parent to find out where they are, are they consistent. So you kind of start new at the beginning of every single year. And then we determine if they're unhoused or still unhoused. And it's, you know, they could be doubled up. We're seeing more not unhoused, as much as doubling up. So we see that more. The number has stayed pretty stable in Beacon, which is interesting. So around other districts, we're seeing it steadily increase. I have some theories as to why that is, but I'm not 100% sure. And what you see in the 39 is families. So it could be four children who are together in that 39. But yes, we start every, and then, so if a student comes in and is unhoused, a social worker meets with them. We've set up transportation, yeah, every year.
And so doubling up, I'm sorry, that meant?
So like, if you are unhoused from your location, but you're living with your sister, and you've gone to that location, it's considered doubling up.
Okay.
Yeah. That's more of a common thing, I would say.
And what, they're allowed to attend the district for their entire education, or is there a limit to?
So we go one year, and we have to verify again if they continue to be unhoused.
But if they're still unhoused, if that situation does not change?
That's right. Yeah. But we provide them with a lot of supports to try to find support for them. Yeah. Okay, so contractual services. So these are the things that we have contracts on, that you guys, you all vote on, which I appreciate. So it's occupational therapy, physical therapy, speech and language, vision services, assistive technology, teacher of the deaf, and job coaching. We also have tutoring services. So if a student is in the hospital, they receive that service while they're in the hospital. And so we receive all of that tutoring. Medicaid Management, which is our consulting services to make sure that we are submitting to the state as much reimbursable amounts as we can get. So they work with us. Parent Counseling and Training is required for students with autism, and we do that through Anderson. And then any independent educational evaluators that might be needed. So the projected cost for this is a decrease. Again, the reason why is because we are looking to collaborate more with Duchess BOCs on job coaching services, so that we can have the opportunities for job coaching be here in Beacon. So right now, students are going to like Big Lots in Poughkeepsie, or the Marriott, you know, those locations. But we're working really hard in partnering here, right in Beacon, so the kids can walk to that location, do their job coaching, and then have, hopefully, lifelong employment. That's what we're looking for here in our community. So it's very exciting, and Duchess BOCs is going to collaborate with us on that.
And how does that work? Like, where are they going to go and what?
So I'll be walking up and down Main Street, saying, how do you feel about having a job coach? Getting lists from everybody. Yeah. And then they would interview a student or be a match, and they go out with an adult. So they would have a job coach or someone with them at wherever it is that they're going on Main Street. And keep it going.
Paying it forward.
Yeah. Okay, so here's some professional development. So safety care support, we started last year. It's de-escalation training. We had 40 individuals go through it last year, and it was mostly teaching assistants and aides. We have five train the trainers here in the district, which is our own teachers training us on de-escalation strategies, which is fantastic, you know, because they, you know, have, they trust the teachers. They want to learn from the teachers. Teachers work very closely with me. We're going to be implementing a contract with GNR through, again, Putnam Northern Westchester BOCs. And like Anthony mentioned, you know, these are all go-through BOCs, so we get funding back on all of these for sixth grade at Rombout. So this is specifically for sixth grade at Rombout. This past year, we did integrated co-teaching training for all of the elementary, which you'll see some pictures in a minute. And this year, we're going to be implementing with GNR for co-teaching for all of sixth grade. So not special education. It's special education, general education administrators. And they'll be coming one time a month and providing professional development all day. And the teachers don't leave the classroom. They're going to where the kids are. And then specialized classroom support and transportation training from Anderson on diverse learning experiences and how to support our children, not only in transport, but in the classroom. And Anderson will come in and do a needs assessment. They will make a recommendation to the classroom, and they will follow up as well consistently, every month, to give feedback to us. So here are some pictures of the integrated co-teaching training. These are our elementary, just a few. So you can see that we have trainers here that turnkeyed it. It was packed. It was a packed house. I think they had like 25 or 30 people every single time they offered it. And I mean, it's a testament to how much they love each other. And they were all smiling, and it was just really a great experience. And I feel, I think they felt really supported by each other. It was great. Supplies, materials, and subscriptions. So again, we're expecting a decrease in this. We're just changing the way that we project cost for these. And this is like your occupational therapy materials, like bolsters and all of those things that are really expensive. We're doing, rather than allocating the money, where we have a plan for, this is your, a bolster is something you can like roll across, like for a kiddo. And so you, you're buying this thing, we're expecting it to last this number of years, and now we're going to, you know, replace it in a different location. So rather than allocating a full cost, we're doing a rollout cost, so it, no pun intended. All right, these are our grants, IDEA 611 and 619 Grants. These are federal grants that are, in the past, in the Pupil Services Department, have been allocated toward things like supplies. We have moved all of it, it's taken us two years to do it, to salaries and benefits for the teachers, because, you know, that is the business we are in, is supporting kids and supporting our teachers. And so we have moved all of the funds now to the teacher side. It's very excited about this program. It's called, in fact, Mr. Dwyer is there today. It's the Brookline Center. It comes out of Massachusetts. And right now, if we have a student who's experienced a mental health challenge or is really school-averse, we have very limited resources on what to do to really support them in school. So what, two of the things that we do is we refer to Intensive J Treatment, which is at Duchess BOCs, or ITSP, which is a therapeutic setting at PNW. So that means if I'm having a hard time in school, I have to transition to Duchess BOCs, away from my teachers. The work is still coming from the teachers. And I get support from a mental health provider. And then the goal over time is to transition back to the school. Those transitions are really hard for kids who are experiencing this kind of difficulty. So we've had five students at the high school in three years get into the program because the slots are so small. There's just, because it serves the entire county, right? So like, we're, there's only 12 slots, and everybody's looking for those slots. And so that cost for three years was about $95,000 for those five students. We're looking at building that here in the high school. It's for $16,000. And it would need a part-time social worker and a full-time teaching assistant. And the idea is that the mental health provider works with the kids during the day, and there's a teaching assistant in a space. So if the student is comfortable going to math, they go to math. And then they, whoever their, like, safe person preferred teacher is, they could go there, and then they come back. And if they're ready to go to math and English, they do that. It's only for 10 weeks. You know, so you're always meeting, you always are receiving your support. So it's rather than, you know, I'm having a moment and I'm going to go talk to somebody, it's built into the program, and then the program cost reduces exponentially. It's like $16,000 the first year, $10,000 the second year, and $2,000 every year after that. And the $2,000 every year after that is just because there's parent resources built into the program. So there's a parent connection. It's been very successful. I've seen many programs, and we're looking to build it this year. So that's where that .5 social worker comes.
Would that be exclusively for Beacon students?
It is.
Okay. And it's not something where if we had space and someone was trying to place at the center, that they could come to Beacon, or no? Okay.
No, this is just for us, just our Beacon students.
And you think there'll be an ongoing need?
Yes, I do. Yeah. I asked Cory today, how many do you think could have been served this year, just in this year, if we could have gotten slots? He said 10, but he wasn't counting school-avoidant. So, so it's not that we only had five students in three years. It's that
Least.
Only five got, yeah. It's so hard to get in. Yeah.
Okay.
Is it going to be a parent component with that as well?
There is a parent component. Yes, there's a parent, parent, yep, yep.
And is that just at the high school, or will that be at the middle school as well?
Yep, just at the high school. It seems that the best success has been at the high school. And you're also like really working against time with credits. So the student who leaves, it's very hard to get them back in, right? That, that, just, just that, oh my gosh, I don't even know where to start. So part of what this does is it prioritizes what classes the student should take right away, you know, like what work could be done to get the credit. And that's where like the teaching assistant and social worker work to make sure that the student has a plan for how to get back into the swing. So.
Is it a special ed, special education program? It's not, right? It's gen, okay. So it's gen ed too, okay.
Yep, any student. I mean, it's not exclusive to either. Yeah.
Great.
Yep.
Is there a population of students that you're targeting, like school avoidance or depressive or?
That's right. So school-avoidant, anxious, depressed, difficulty coming back into the program. What it's not is suspension. It's not a recovery program.
Are you going to have like a preference as to like kids that were hospitalized and are transitioning back or?
So, so yes, there's actually like a point scale to the Bright program, because four students who are returning from hospital might need more care than 10 students who are just school-avoidant. So you don't want to have, you know, you don't want to over-subscribe your program either. So yes, students that have gone into hospital, have been hospitalized, and are returning back to school would get preference, yes, to make sure. Because often, we often don't even get discharge papers. They just come right back in. And so we're not even sure how to support the kiddo, because we don't know what's going on. So that's what it would be.
Is the social worker that's going to be part of the program or the TA, are they going to act like a case manager, like corresponding with teachers to say? Or like, is it going to be the guidance or?
Nope. The teaching assistant will work directly with the teachers. So if I have seven teachers, I'll be coordinating with them to get the work, right? And then the social worker, so if I have a social worker at Beacon High School, and I work with that social worker, and I have a hospitalization, then I'll go to this other social worker. But my goal is to transition right back. So it's, it's really like making sure you have all your resources right in the beginning, so that you're successfully coming back.
Do we have a safe, I'm going to say a safe space, but like, where do you envision not being located in the school?
I don't know where it is here at the high school, but there is a, and space will need to be designated for it, yes. Because obviously, there'll be some therapy going on. We, I did meet with someone to kind of tell us what the Beacon numbers are, what the Beacon hospitalization rates are, because we have them, because we do the home tutoring part from the hospitalization. And they give us a recommendation as to what the staffing would be.
And Heather, that, so is art, is the TA and the social worker communicating with a bright person? Like, are they, or there's no, do they like meet with them? Or just, or is it just, they, we buy this, like, what's the $16,000?
First is because it's all the resources to help us, to help us set it up. And that's why it jumps down so quickly.
Okay.
So they help us with like, how do we determine what our highest need is? How do I know what the space should be? What happens when I'm having a difficult time getting the information from a teacher? What happens if the student has multiple? What happens if the student has multiple hospitalizations? And the two thousand is the resources that carry on for the parents because the huge part of this is providing support to the family, who's also struggling to get their kiddo to school. Because it's, it's really about the whole child, you know?
Okay.
So yes, that's what it is. So here's the budget summary. This is all of it together. So if you look at the left is the budget that we have right now, then the projected cost. And if you go to the right, it's the increase or decrease, which you've already seen these numbers. But in totality, it's an increase of a hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars in all of it together. So the projected cost would be just over five million dollars for this school year. I did want to give a staff shout out, which I think is really important. So Beacon, you may know, Beacon went through about twenty or more hours of professional development on special education this year. And it was every month or every other month for three hours in the morning, and all of these individuals were there all the time with me, which is just, Beacon was so well represented. Because other school districts were there as well, look, talking about the least restrictive environment. There was a day, which was specifically for principals, so on top of, in addition to Ms. Orser, Ms. Sesamswiggins, and Mr. Soltish, was Mr. Dwyer, Ms. Amendola, and Ms. Beorty also came. And if you see on the left-hand side is all of our school psychologists, because often they are chairing meetings or working in the Part Two Hundred regulations with us. And on the right, we have the four special education coordinators who help us at the building level with department meetings and making sure everyone gets the information that, you know, if a case law comes out. And then Leslie Tompkins, which you heard earlier, she is providing support as well. She works very closely with us, really talking about what interventions are appropriate for students and making appropriate recommendations to special education. I'm very grateful, there's, it's a big team, and I can't tell you how grateful I am. All right, do you have any questions at all?
I just wanted to say, this was so well organized, and I really am appreciative of you explaining how the structure of it works, like in terms of the laws and what all the, the terms mean and like putting names and faces to the staff who are involved. Like honestly, this is the clearest understanding I think I've ever had of the program, and I really appreciate.
Yeah, well, I don't do it alone, I have to say, like I have a team here that helps me.
But I appreciate the presentation.
Yeah. In the pictures, if you notice in the slides, like, they can't really see it, but that's Beacon, that's Mount Beacon. And then the other slides, there's pictures of the school buildings. So the other slides have, like, there's, there's Rombaut at the top.
Nice.
Yeah, so I will, and there's the high school. So thank you, Joan, for taking all the pictures.
I, I really appreciate the effort to build programming in place here and to also find ways to keep kids integrated in their own school setting. You know, to Flores' point about like really understanding the overall structure, I think one thing that's kind of common to the experience of being in a class, you know, have, being a family with a classified student is that you live kind of in a parallel here sometimes, where you feel like you are, you're sort of part of everybody, and then you jump over here. And then you, you know all of these different people, and it actually is, I've always found it like really rewarding and eye-opening and kind of a huge gift because I now feel like, oh, I definitely want my kid in ICT class because, like my gen ed kid, I'd want in ICT class because I would know like how individualized the instruction is and how much they benefit from the experience. But I think that this, like I see you sort of pulling everything closer together to one community, and that feels really good.
Great, that's the goal, thank you. Any other questions at all? Well, I appreciate your time tonight. I didn't have enough stickers for everybody this time. We'll have to bring them the next time, so thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on in the agenda. There are a couple of additions. Nine oh two, the dollar amount was changed from a million dollars to nine hundred and ninety thousand dollars. And sixteen point oh two is added, an added agenda item to accept two proposals for playgrounds at South and JVF as part of the capital project. We do not need an executive session, I don't think. Is everyone okay with that?
Yep.
So superintendent's report.
Okay. Thank you. I, I just wanted to do a couple updates here with, in terms of capital project meetings. We have a few more scheduled. I'll send these to the board tomorrow just via email. But I'm gonna visit with the Glenham PTA Wednesday, April third at three thirty. The Sargent PTA Monday, April eighth at six. Those are in-person. JVF PTA Tuesday, April ninth at seven, that's Zoom. Tomorrow, I'm meeting with the whole team, the whole capital project team. We're gonna work out at least some of the community meetings. The ones that maybe we don't have to specifically partner with another organization with will have scheduled. And we're also meeting tomorrow to work on launching our capital project website, which we'll probably be able to launch right after spring break. So, and I should also note, we had the first capital project meeting at South last week on Tuesday, and Meredith and Summer were there, and it was super engaging and lots of good questions. So we're also at all these meetings. I'm, I'm trying after the meeting's over to write down every question, at least the ones I remember. And we're also on the website, just gonna try to create a fairly massive FAQ of just all the different questions we get. We'll also kind of just send out an email to folks or put it on the website too, for people to submit a question. So again, these community meetings, we're gonna do some virtual and some in-person. But that process has started, and it's really exciting to talk about. And I, I probably will blend in a little bit later in the spring, in, in the spring, some budget stuff too, into that. So just also, Friday of this past week was the first ever book bash. The elementary principals and elementary librarians and lots of other folks, community members, PTAs collaborated to create this first ever event. It was a lot of fun, really well attended, and, and Rombaut experiences first teddy bear sleepover, stuff, stuff, stuffy sleepover, so that was exciting too. But I, I, one of the reflections I was having is I was, after I finished my book and was just kind of watching the crowd is really the only way to keep up with most of these things is every one of our schools now has an Instagram site. We obviously have district Instagram and Facebook, is to subscribe to all of those, and you can get at least a sense of keeping up with all the things offered, but it was a really great event. And I love new things that come up, so shout out to all the people that arrange that. Just, this may be something that other board members comment, but, comment on, but you know, the state budget is advancing, and the only thing I want to just kind of note. So the Assembly and the Senate came out with their budgets this last week. And it was, it was really great to see that, I think, both of them kind of prominently mentioned changing the funding for pre-K slash UPK. So, so for a long, I'm, I'm not gonna take credit for this, but for a long time, I think many people have been saying, because the state has just kind of kept expanding the number of slots they were giving you without changing the amount they were paying for the slot, so it sounds like both sides of the legislature have been listening to, a lot of people complain about that, and they're looking at expanding the amount we get for each pre-K student. So that was really gratifying along with, you know, both, both parts of the legislature pushing for no cuts to foundation aid, which was great too. So we're preparing for every eventuality. Thank you to the board for doing some strong advocacy work and all the community members who wrote letters as well to that. And just back to pre-K, we, you know, launched our pre-K registration last week? Was it just last week? Two weeks ago? One week? So we again, you know, we may not have to do it, but we do have to do probably lottery again. We were able to fulfill probably ninety-five percent of the people registering last year. Our hope is we can do the same this year, but we're in the process of doing that. And we'll do lottery and placement of students in mid to late April. And then lastly, so I'm not making this official yet, because you just never know, but we've used, we have kind of a, we don't have a straight day-for-day snow, what do we even, uh, give back? We don't have a straight day-for-day formula in the teacher contract, but we've used three snow days, which equals one give-back day right now. If for some reason we had four snow days, that would still be one give-back day. But I'm gonna wait till after spring break, just because, you know, it'll be a little warmer then, to make it official. But the snow give-back day would be May twenty-third, so Memorial Weekend, which is a little bit longer than normal this year, is gonna have a day added to it. Unless some giant blizzard rolls through in the next, in the next few weeks. And, and that's all I have, but thank you to the board for the advocacy work with the state.
Board comment. Themra?
Thanks, Saggy and Heather. I'm sure you'll hear a lot of thanks from everyone in the room for your, for your hard work. I'll also say that that meeting at South was, I think that was great for the community. They really, I thought it was great for them to understand the new approach that the facilities team is taking to the important, I mean, really just essential upgrades that are happening. So that was, that was really appreciated. And also that, that community has been talking a lot about literacy and reading, so I appreciate, and I think they will, that, that care and attention that's being paid. Thank you.
Kristin?
Yeah, I'll just echo that. Thank you very much for those thorough presentations. They were really just so full. I'm, I'm gonna go back and read them again because they're so full of really helpful information. And I, I appreciate the approaches that we're taking to create systems here in place that will help our students thrive both in the larger population and in the special ed population. It's just being able to really care for our kids here and give them the best foundation is, is such a heartening thing to watch. Yes, I'm really glad about the reception to the approach we're taking at facilities, which is really that we're trying to be more proactive and less reactive, that we're making investments in buildings, and we're not trying to chase problems since they happen, but prevent them, which will, you know, comes at a little bit of a cost. I had my first, I wouldn't say angry, but I had somebody confront me about this, and it felt good to just say I one hundred percent stand behind the approach that we're taking and the decisions we're making with regard to this investment because I think it will ultimately cost less down the road. And there won't be any surprises in the middle of the school year with something going wrong. Yep, and then that's, yeah, I think that's it.
Eunice?
I just want to also thank Saggy and Heather for the presentations. They were really great. And I'd just like to say, I hope everyone enjoys their spring break.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Alina?
Saying the presentations were great, specifically the, Heather, yours. I've had a kid that's gone through and had an IEP plan, and we transitioned from one school district here, and there was no slip, and she's not even on it anymore. So it was great. So your presentation, it's really good, and you guys do the work. Like you really put into it, so thank you.
No, same thing, ditto what everyone has said. I thought the presentations were great, and that's it for me.
Thank you. Anthony?
No comments.
Laura?
Yes, well, obviously, the presentations were great. I know, you, you haven't heard that enough, but I will, I will echo that. It was, it's really helpful every year to see everything laid out in such a clear way and to understand the work that goes into what you're doing. And I'm, I'm, I'm always, I always come away from this excited by what's happening, which for a budget presentation says a lot, so. I wanted to say, we had our monthly meeting of the Duchess County School Boards Association, and our speaker did not show, but that actually worked out to be okay because we just started having sort of an open conversation about advocacy and where things are going and how different districts are, are working. And that was super helpful just to hear that discussion. And then, you know, we talked really specifically about how the advocacy committee within the Duchess County School Boards Association is working and/or not working, because this is our first year doing it. And so we've decided that we think it's probably gonna be better to really focus on just two to three issues every year. This year, we came out hard and tried to do five, and I think that was a bit more than we could really handle because everybody's schedules are really busy. So now we're going into the resolution section of the work that we're doing. And we can sort of focus because there's actually already a lot of NISBA resolutions out there about electric school buses, so it's not really something that we have to focus on necessarily for, for that. But, you know, there's also progress around another issue that we, that we were advocating for, which was raising the Adbol salary cap for career and technical education instructors. So that did actually make it into the one-house budget as well. So that's pretty exciting, and we're talking about, basically at this point, we're talking about, okay, what do we do now? Who do we talk to and what are the messages that we want to send to them to help sort of push certain things over, over the finish line, like, and we taught, and I'm like, I feel like I'm, I should have come up with a shorter way of saying all this. But basically, we, we're talking about how really, at the end of the day, when we're doing advocacy, people just want to know, like, what, what do you want me to do legislatively? And what do you want me to do financially? And it's like, if we can really get very, very clear when we're doing our advocacy about those two things, we sort of save ourselves a lot of time and energy, and we get people to pay attention. So it was an interesting conversation. I had something else that I wanted to say, but this went on a while and I forgot, so I will see it next time.
Well, to give you more time, just I wanted to thank the, the Public Relations Committee for the letters you guys created. I think, I don't know if we've had a meeting since then, it feels like. I, I just think that that work was, it was exactly what you talked about. It was, it was a very clear ask, really clear direction, and, and like, you know, put numbers to it. And it was so easy to send those in and adapt them to be personalized in some way so that it felt like it was coming from individuals. But it was a great piece of, you know, sort of material for people to work from and understand what's going on and what to do. And I just, it was, I'm so appreciative of how quickly you guys turned those out.
Thanks. Thank you, Anthony, for starting the, starting the chain. It was definitely helpful. That leads into the call-in thing. Do you want to? I was gonna mention. Okay, good. Yeah. Okay. So, yes, great presentations. Also, thanks for the book bash. It was so fun to read to kids and see the teddy bear sleepover. Super awesome. A few things. First, I wanted to just go over our upcoming committee meetings. So we have a facilities meeting, April fifteenth. We have scheduled a policy and Proll meeting on April ninth. I actually have a conflict that night. I don't know if folks could do it on the sixteenth instead. Both facilities and? No, facilities is fine for me on the fifteenth. It's the, the policy and the Proll meeting on the ninth that I cannot make. I'm sorry. Oh, wait, I have facilities on the sixteenth here. We moved it to before the board meeting. Okay. Sorry. No, it's okay. Eric, it's part of working with me. I'm always gonna be like, what day? Well, and it, it hasn't changed on the Beacon site, that's why I'm seeing it there. Okay, maybe I didn't send it to Vicky's side. Okay, and then?
Facilities is the fifteenth.
Fifteenth, before the meeting.
Yep.
Okay. Everybody got that?
Yep.
Okay, cool.
I'm fine for a policy on the sixteenth, but you said you can't?
No, I, I can. I just wanted to, I wanted to make sure, and it, and I have its policy and Proll. Proll that night. Yeah, is that okay?
On the sixteenth?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Starting at seven?
I think we were doing six to eight, but it's seven to nine. Yeah, we had six, we had policy six, Proll seven. Does that still work for people?
Sixteen.
On the sixteenth.
So instead of the ninth, it's the sixteenth, that's six for policy, Proll's.
Yes.
So would you say Proll at seven, policy at six?
Yes, on the sixteenth, yes.
Thank you so much. Okay, and we, it seems like there's the possibility of there being more candidates than open seats at the election. So I just wanted to open the conversation of trying to organize a meet the candidates night, if that happens. We won't know until, when are the?
We won't know until, when are the? May 1st or the? Oh, really? Okay, because on the website, it says that the ballot order is being chosen on the April 26th, I think. Okay. Maybe I'm misremembering it.
No, I think you're right.
Yeah. I think that's to be corrected. Okay. So I wanted to sort of just line it up in case we wanted to do it. So if anyone knows anyone who might want to moderate that, please let me know. And we can start thinking about a date.
Have we done them before? And who, do you know who's moderated before? Have we had?
In the past, yeah, Lorraine Hextall, a community member.
Oh, okay.
And, and Deputy. And I'm happy to reach.
We've done two.
We've done two. I, I was definitely participated in one.
You did one and then there was one.
Participated in one.
You did, yeah.
Okay.
So, and they, and it was the same people actually that moderated it both times, I think. Lorraine was definitely part of both. I will reach out to them, but if they're, you know, I haven't been in touch with Lorraine in a while, so. Yeah. There is a NISBA resolution, resolution survey in your inbox from March 11th. It's always good to do those if you can. And then the, there is more advocacy. If you have time tomorrow, Alliance for Quality Education is doing a phone bank at 4:30. And that I think is a really useful advocacy tool. And then the last thing is, I think, I'm, I'm gonna reach out one more time and try to get a, some feedback on one of our, one of the firms that we interviewed. But we'll probably discuss it at the next meeting and I'll, I'll have that information for you. Okay, in new business, we have a few items. First is we are amending the board meeting calendar. Just, this is just a legal issue to have it within the window of the election. So it's gonna be moved from Monday, May 6th to Tuesday, May 7th.
The budget hearing needs to be 14 days.
Yeah.
Or at least, can't be more than 14 days before the election starts. That's the way to say it. So we didn't catch that. So it'd be moving to, from a Monday to a Tuesday night.
Exactly. Is it, does that work for everyone? Okay. Can I have a motion to change the night of the board meeting to May 7th?
So moved.
Second.
Eunice, second by Flora. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. I'm also in favor, what are we, 8? Passes 8 to 0.
Yeah.
The next is a roll call vote for bond resolution. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Beacon City School District hereby approves the attached resolution authorizing the purchase of two zero, zero emission school buses for the Beacon City School District at a maximum estimated cost of $990,000 and authorizing the issuance of $990,000 bond, in bonds of said school district to pay the cost thereof. That is not exactly how, what the, that's not exactly what the ballot will say. That is not what the proposition will say, but this is the legal language for the bond. Exactly. Yeah. Are there any questions about this? Can I have a motion to approve it?
So moved.
Second.
Second by Eunice. This is a roll call vote. Vicky, you wanna, do you want me to do it or?
You want me to do it?
I, I can do it. Anthony?
Aye.
Samra?
Yes.
Kristin?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Eunice?
Yes.
Alina?
Yes.
I also am in favor. And then we have one more roll call vote for the capital project. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Beacon City School District authorizes the reconstruction and construction of improvements to various school district facilities in and for the city district, city school district of the city of Beacon, Dutchess County, New York at a maximum estimated cost of $49,950,000 and authorizes the use of 500,000. There's a typo there.
Yeah.
Capital reserve funds. Should we do an amendment to, to it to? Okay.
Actual document is correct.
Capital reserve funds and issuance of, of not exceeding $49,450,000 bonds of said school district to pay the cost thereof. Are there any comments or questions? Can I have a motion to approve this?
Second.
Anthony, second by Kristin. This is also a roll call. Okay. Oh, that's good.
Ms. Orson? Yes. Ms. Black? Yes. Chief? Yes. Ms. Bush? Yes.
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Stabler? Yes. Ms. Skuler? Yes.
Thank you. Consent agenda. The use of the consent agenda permits the Board of Education to make more effective use of its time by adopting a single motion to cover those relatively routine matters which are included. Any member of the board who wishes to discuss individually a particular piece of business on the consent agenda may so indicate and that item will be reconsidered and voted on separately, thus preserving the right of all board members to be heard on any issue. Are there any items that any board members would like to have pulled from the consent agenda?
Yeah, I, I have one. 13, 1302 B16.
Any others? Can I have a motion to approve 1201 through 1607, less 1302 B16?
So moved.
Second.
Flora, second by Alina. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. I'm also in favor. Passes 8 to 0. Can I have a motion to approve 1302 B16?
So moved.
Eunice?
Second.
Second by Samra. Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Abstained.
Abstained.
I'm in favor. Passes 7 to 0. Can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved. For everyone. I will second. I will second all of you.
Second by Kristin. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. I'm also in favor. Passes 8 to 0. Have a great night, everyone.